Good evening and welcome to the Greater Rutland County Supervisory Union October 3 meeting. If you'd all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance
Aye.
to the United States of America and to the Republic of North Carolina. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first order of business is approval of the agenda. And if we could remove from the agenda, old, from old business, the pre-K discussion, as well as letter I under policies F eight pre-K admission.
Make motion.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We had the resolution.
Oh geez, can we go back? Can I add the, can we amend that motion and add the discussion for VSBA resolutions?
Adjustments.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. General public comment, we don't have any public here with us. And I don't see any on the screen with us, so. We'll move on to approval of the minutes of September 5. The motion will be in order to approve the minutes of September 5. Make a motion. Motion by Tina, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Approval of the warrants, receive your warrants via GRCSU email. All questions and concerns, discussion items should be sent to Louis. A motion would be in order for approval of the warrants. Motion by Tina, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Superintendents report, Chris.
Thank you, Lisa. A few items to discuss. This, we are beginning budgeting season, you know, things kind of shift around a little bit as we are now in, I think, our fifth week of school. Myself and Louis and Lisa Madison have a meeting with our admins, one individually to discuss beginning year goals, as well as budgeting priorities. That's one of the things that we have been asking our admins to think about is to shift away from the idea of a wish list more to a need list. I think we will come back to the boards and prepare our budgets. We really have to make sure that we are prioritizing the, the resources, the staffing, the programs that our admins need to do their job, as well as our staff members. Those, as we begin our budget discussions on a local level, we'll have those lists, you know, for the boards ready to go. So that's a shift for us is, I think we felt that sometimes when we come back with a wish list, that there's this idea that hey, it'd be great if we could get this, but really, you know, we have to make sure that our staff and our admins, you know, and our schools have the resources they need to their jobs, particularly as we look at, you know, improving our, you know, academics and, you know, academic growth, and we look at culture. But we just want to make sure they have everything they, they need, so. There are a couple of items that I want to talk about, I'll just quickly discuss GRCSU Fastbridge. We have completed the first round assessment and Lisa may talk about this during her report, so I won't do much with that outside of let you know that at the November board meeting, we will be presenting some feedback and some data around that. And in your shared, the board shared folder, you should have seen a, you know, kind of a grid that explains when we'll provide feedback on Fastbridge as well as the Bitcap and CAGIA as well. So if you're having a hard time finding that, just let me know and we'll, myself or Lisa, I'll be locate that. The strategic plan, this past weekend, we, a copy of our strategic plan was sent out to all staff, community members for review. There is a, an updated version in our board, you know, let's get the shared folder for our board. If there are any questions on that, please feel free to reach out. We were very happy with the, the professional look of this report, something which, one of the reasons why we wanted to wait, as opposed to send out our PowerPoint or our slides, this, you know, kind of does a much nicer job of presenting the bigger picture in terms of the reports to graduate, as well as our strategic plan. As we discussed, I think, two meetings ago, we will be providing an update or feedback in December at the GRCSU board meeting in terms of where we're at, how things are looking, just kind of, just, you know, a corollary report for you. And I just want to update around the VSBA annual fall meetings on October 26. I know there will be a few individuals who will be attending in person. There is a virtual link, so I would encourage as many of our board members to attend as possible. It said the link is in the, the packet, the draft, so if there are any other questions that we're more happy to ask, answer this time.
Questions? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to Lisa, Assistant.
Good evening, everyone. I have a copy of my report in the drive. We're, I'm going to save my time of time for a little bit later in the agenda to present a curriculum proposal to you with Dr. Herd Principal Jen Martin, who's been here maybe for that purpose. And then just a, you know, a couple of little updates. We're really looking forward to the in-service day this Friday. It'll be our second day with all our teachers together this year, so lots of planning and exciting things underway to get that script together. We also have been working on the youth live pilot, which is the Onyx pilot that we're doing in all of our kindergartens, as well as Rutland Town Gate Two this year, and supporting the teachers in that. And just again, some great things happening there. They're really diving in both feet, making it their own, learning how to do all the pieces and parts and implement it for the students. And they collected some initial benchmark data that they're finishing turning in in the next couple of days. So I'll be taking a look at that. And we'll continue to do those check-ins throughout the pilot this year so that we can monitor progress. But so far, so good, and a really great enthusiastic group, they're working on that. And Chris mentioned Bitcap, and when you do go to that proposal for when you will get data reports from us this year, you will see that the Bitcap data is a date TBD based on when the state releases the annual snapshot. And we don't know always when they're going to do that. Sometimes it's December, sometimes it's later, sometimes it's earlier. Right now, our Bitcap data is embargoed, so schools obviously, well, schools, schools had access to it and then they shut down the system for a while, and then last week they gave us access again. So they're, they're working through it. I, I think, and we'll, we're just going to have to see, see what happens with that. But as soon as it's available, we will work, we just schedule the time to come, report on it. And we don't have a lot of information about the plans this year. There was a letter that told us that additional features of the system would be available this year. We have not heard anything since that letter, but we'll, we'll continue to keep you updated as we learn more about that information. If there's any questions, I'm happy to address them.
I just wanted to make a comment. Congratulations to Proctor, both the elementary and senior high school for being done with the school improvement.
Yes, that's amazing. Yeah, that's huge. Thank you. All right, Eric, are you at a place, Eric, where we could discuss the resolutions? You know, he's traveling.
Uh, yeah, sure.
Okay. So the resolutions were in everyone's pocket. Does anyone have any questions? Or Eric can kind of just give you a preview of why the VSBA board voted the way they did? You want to, you want to kind of just start with that, Eric?
Uh, yeah, actually, I don't know if, I, I take that back. Could you give me like five minutes?
Sure.
Sorry.
Okay, that's fine.
And then I'll be able to, yeah.
Okay, so we'll just go on to personnel for contract recommendations. So for professional staff, we have Wells Village Interventionist, thirty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight, which is pro-rated, one hundred and fifty-six days in a grant position. And Jessica Melvack Wellness Center Special Ed Teacher, revised staff, moving from seventy thousand, two thirty-three to seventy-one, nine thirty-seven. Support staff, Michelle Parker, Proctor Elementary Para, sixteen dollars and nineteen cents an hour. Molly Ward Para, school to be determined, for seventeen dollars and sixteen cents an hour. Valerie McGinnis, Proctor High School, sixteen dollars and nineteen cents an hour. Darlene Davis, GRCSU Bus Monitor, sixteen dollars and nineteen cents an hour. Extracurricular, Ryan McIntyre, mentoring two staff members. Tyler Sherman mentoring one staff member. Kira Simonetti mentoring one staff member. Janelle Pease mentoring one staff member. Ally Mitchell mentoring two staff members. Katie Chase Oakman mentoring one staff member. Stipend to be determined. Didn't we sign these contracts before? Why does it say stipend to be determined?
Is that for, I think for the special educators, they have a range of hours that are acceptable for the program. So depending on how many hours they work with their mentee, depends on what their stipend ends up being.
So some of these people are mentoring multiple special educators and regular staff?
Typically, they're mentoring special educators if they're a special educator.
Yeah.
Well, we had a discussion actually a few days ago about what to put on, on the board packet for the amount, because it can range based on the hours, we felt it was best to do to be TBD, because we didn't want to put an amount on there and then have them work less hours and have their stipend be less than what's on the board report.
So what's, what's the range of hours?
She's looking for that, the salary for Jessica Meavitt. She just said it was twenty, seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven, but it's actually.
Oh, fifty-seven. Sorry.
I just wanted, did you try to tell me earlier?
So are they not signing contracts like this?
They are. It lists the range right on the top of the contract. So for special educators, what we found a few years ago, since spending space for a couple of years now, but what we found a few years ago is that some special educators really take very good advantage of their mentor and they use them to review IEPs, to help prep for meetings, to support them with case management work, to problem solve, and that those folks were exceeding the initial range of hours that we had put in for mentoring. Not by much, a few hours here or there, but that it really made a difference for them in feeling super prepared and ready to go in the role that they were serving. So we created a range. So for a Level One Special Educator, the range is thirty-one to thirty-seven hours total, which includes any meetings or anything that they're doing with them. And for a Level Two Special Educator, the range is twenty-three to thirty-one hours. And so the stipends are based on the CPA hourly rate according to the number of hours that they work with.
So these hours are what, total hours? Okay. Any questions about the contract recommendations? Hearing none, a motion will be in order to approve as presented.
Make the motion.
Discussion. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Resignations. Oh, Al, GRCSU Data Manager, effective twelve fifteen twenty-three. Megan Watkins, POE at Polton Elementary Para, effective nine twenty-six twenty-three. Ashley Arnold, Rutland Town Special Ed Para. Pending approval of moving to Rutland Town Locally Funded Planning Room Assistant. Motion would be in order to accept the resignations.
Make that motion.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Eric, are, are you ready for resolutions? Who?
Amanda.
Oh, Amanda, sorry. I feel like we're.
I'm sorry, I, I wasn't quick enough when you said any questions. I noticed that there's also a resignation for Martha Camara, but she's not, her letter of resignation is there, but she's not included on the list. Was that technically not on the list, or should we add her now?
I think it was a leave.
Yeah, it's a leave of absence. He's requesting a leave of absence.
And that's just for our.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
That's just for our information only.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Amanda's a leave until the end of the year.
Eric? Oh, he's not with us anymore, okay. All right, I feel like I'm struggling tonight. Okay, I'm not acclimated to the room yet. Okay, how about we go to, well, do you want us to take action? We don't need to take action on the leave request.
Leave.
Yeah. Um, so go to finance, Louis.
Do you want to handle these in any certain order, or?
Yeah, that's good.
This is the easiest.
Yeah, so at the end, we have a big pile of money, we're all jumping in.
All right, anything? Okay, so we'll do budget first then. Does anybody, I do have a couple of paper copies if anybody wants.
I'm good.
You said no.
I guess, why not? As long as you made a copy.
So the budget was put into the directory earlier today, just a couple of hours ago, so. People can follow along.
So does everybody, did everyone find that in the drive?
I got it here.
Oh.
It was at four forty, it was put in.
Yes. So Amanda, Linda, Meredith, Lance?
Yes, I've got it.
Okay.
What's going on? All right, so we're going to talk about the FY twenty-five budget, first draft for the SU. So the SU budget has two main components. There's the general fund and then the special ed fund. So we're going to handle the general fund first and then we'll move into special ed. So the first page, and we may jump around a little bit, and there are, there are page numbers on the report, so you can just locate that as we, as we go through the, that pertains to the section that we're on. So the general fund budget right now is up by fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars, and that is the assessment that I'm referring to, not total expense. That's approximately a three percent increase. Included in that budget is a ten percent increase in health insurance. That is just an estimate at this point. We have not received any guidance from VISBIT yet on what they are anticipating that to increase this year. There was some items in the news about like UVM requesting a twenty-four percent increase, and I know there was some pushback on that. So we're, we're hoping that, we are looking at a smaller increase than that. So right now, I did speak with some fellow business managers and we're thinking the ten to thirteen percent range is a good starting point. So that's, that's what we have in there for right now. Ten percent does equal approximately twenty-two thousand dollars for the general fund employees. I also include, included a three percent increase in rent, which is a couple of thousand dollars. And then the last bullet point on there is just to point out that, so since over the last five years, FY twenty-one through FY twenty-five, the general fund assessment is of a total of fifty-five thousand dollars, which is a cumulative total of three percent, an average of approximately half a percent per year. So we've been very diligent at the SU to, to make sure that we are, are keeping the budget in check and with modest increases or decreases each year. And I have included on page five, just a small bar graph, which shows the increase and decrease from, from year to year over the last five years. Going to page two, we're, we'll come back to the items to consider in, in just a moment. But on page two is a list of ADM on the left-hand side, and on the right-hand side is special ed. So we use these metrics to divvy up the, and allocate the SU budget to the local boards based on two different factors. So the general fund gets broken up by ADM, and I've shown you, I've provided three years' worth of ADM data, just for your records, but we just, we do use one year's worth of ADM, we use the prior year. So this year, for the, for next year's budget, we're using last year's ADM. And the reason we use last year's and then we have that lag, this year's ADM is not available yet, and so that we can plan, and we're not waiting for that data to come out, we're just using a one-year lag. So when you're looking at your assessment allocation, there's two things that are impacting that. There's one, what the budget is doing, if the budget is up or down. But then the other factor is, how does your, how does your ADM impact the total? So if you, if you're seeing an increase in ADM and everybody else is seeing a decrease, you may see a larger increase in your allocation than everybody else. And if your allocation, if your ADM is staying steady and everybody else is going down, you may still see an increase. So those are factors that could impact your allocation, even if the budget is staying steady. So our ADM did increase from last year, from eighteen fifty-two to eighteen eighty-three. So that's good, that, that means that we are seeing a steady increase in enrollment. The prior year was eighteen fifty-eight, so we are still up over the last three years. So students are still moving into our districts. On page four, or I'm sorry, three and four is the details of the budget. And I'm not going to go through this line by line, but I will highlight some of the, the changes. So on the top piece of that budget is our revenues. We, we don't have a lot of revenues in the general fund, we have your assessments, and we have a miscellaneous revenue, which is ninety-five percent made up of grant indirect money. So whenever we have a federal grant, we're allowed to pull a portion of that grant. We can pull a portion out called indirects, and that goes into the general fund as a revenue, and that's to help support all the work that goes into, to having a grant for payroll, accounts payable, grant management, stuff like that. And then our interest expense, because of interest rates being so high, we are seeing a significant increase in interest rates across our SU. Going into the expense part of the budget, it's broken down into sections, which is pretty much departments. So you have your curriculum, administration, physical services, technology, and plan operations. So some of the big changes in curriculum, we did move around some of the professional services. We moved that to, to the software line to more accurately reflect how that money was being spent. Let's see, under. And then plan operations, I mean, that's the biggest change there. Physical services, they did the same thing. I created a accounting software line and took that out of professional services to more accurately reflect accounting-wise, what, what was being spent, or how it was being spent. And then under plan operations, we have our new building, so we have both the increase in rent, and then there's a few other new lines that are associated with this building that we didn't have before, such as utilities and fuel. So.
Question, Louis? Um, so, under the curriculum, you said, I'm on page three of twelve. You said that you took out professional services and added it under the software line?
Yep, and we did not one for one, but so there was eighty thousand, we went down to five. We hadn't been spending that whole line in the past, the past few years, so we went down to five, and then we moved forty thousand to curriculum software.
So back in twenty-three, we spent fifty-one, over fifty-one. So do you think that we're planning to spend less?
I'll get to that in a minute, yeah. Um, so on page four is just our total expenditures, and then our assessment is total expenditures minus any revenue other than assessment revenue. So you take out miscellaneous revenue and interest income to get our assessment. And then below that, you can see what your assessment was last, and this is going to be this year, based on this budget in front of you, and what that variance is. And you could also see the percentage of the assessment that you're paying. So before we go back into special ed, if you go back to page one, the items for the board to consider. So we have two things that are not in this budget for the board to consider for the general fund. There's, the first one is, so there's, this budget does not include any staffing increases. So it's whatever staffing we have now just brought forward. So the first item is to, right now, the assistant superintendent position is fifty-five percent local funded and one hundred and forty-five percent funded to grants. Part of it is Title One, part of it is Title Two, and then part of it is Medicaid. So we are recommending or proposing that we increase the local percentage of that by fifteen percent and bring the local funding to seventy percent, which would increase our general fund expenditures by twenty-two thousand, but it would make available twenty-two thousand dollars of additional funds in the CFP grant. And there's a couple of reasons for that. So one being with our, with the changes that are happening at the, the state level with our FRL numbers in the recent years, our percentages are not falling to the degree that they need to in order for us to parse out the CFP grant like we were in the past. So we're now falling under a new rule, which, which means we have to put more funds to schools that are at the higher FRL percentage, is correct me if I'm.
Yeah.
So by taking funding out of the CFP grant for assistant superintendent position, it frees up more funds for us to be able to fund the interventionist positions that we have in the past, and being able to navigate that CFP grant a little easier. So that's the first reason. The second reason is, we've been, I know we've talked about this in the past, but our title funding has decreased over the years, and we expect it to continue to decrease, so it's just being proactive. The CFP grant is based on FRL numbers, but it's also being decreased at the federal level as well. So with the decreases at the federal level, added with decreases in free and reduced numbers, it, it is just being proactive to try to plan for the future and kind of move pieces of that each year into the local funding. We don't, fifteen percent is the, the amount we threw out there, but that can be changed up or down. The second item that we're proposing is, so prior to the, to the merger, ninety-five percent of all of the SU and, or end-school software programs were being funded locally. A couple of years ago, we put a, a large sum of money into the general, into the general fund to fund some of those programs at the GRCSU level. That is, a couple of reasons behind that. One, we, it creates less administrative work to have to pay it at, pay it at the SU and then bill it back, or pay it four different times for each of our districts. We just pay one bill and then as part of the assessment calculation, it's a lot easier. And the other reason is, we can sometimes take advantage of bundle deals or a lower subscription rate if we have more users than if we were doing it on a per-school basis. When we moved that large sum of money into the SU, it did not include all software programs. And over the year, when, when all the ESSR money came out and all the COVID fundings, we started paying some of those grant. We started paying some of those grant programs out of federal funding and moving them out of the local districts. Uh, when we moved that first block of money to the SU, we did reduce the local budgets to some degree to to offset that. Um, for those ones that were remaining at the school blood level. Those, those budgeted funds are still at the local level. And each year that we've paid for those programs with federal funds, we've had local savings and that's what's part of the money that's resulting in your. Your surpluses at the local level each year. And we've talked about that each year at the end of the year, that because we have all this S R funding, we've been having these um, these surpluses. Uh, on page six, I have provided you a list of some of the, uh, these are the the majority of the. Larger SU programs that we're using. Um, and sort of the category that they fall into. As far as curriculum, technology and fiscal services.
So does every school use these programs? Every single school uses these programs. So correct me if I'm wrong. But when we first merged, the reason we dumped money in what and changed was because some schools, when they merged, already had. The programs in place and some schools didn't. Correct? Okay.
Some, some of it, but we also.
Yeah, I know we used, we, some of this, when we first merged, some schools were using different program.
Yes.
And we worked towards streaming out to.
Okay. All right, it's just this.
So having this at the SU.
Little clarification.
Advantage, we have more control over programs being used and so that we don't have three different districts using three different programs.
I purchase a lot of things through like Vermont Consortium, like uh Vital Learn and other like Vermont based consort consortium pricing. And so doing a whole block of all of our student users, all of our teachers and all of our users. And one particular program or another, it's just, it's so much cheaper buying them all as the GRCSU in one big block. And then we differentiate the programs locally through like the Google domain or Clever or any of our other programs for management.
I guess for me, the bigger, the biggest question is. It's fine to be talking about this here, but without looking at what my local budgets are going to look like and talking about moving. Bigger chunks to the local every year. Um, like I I'm not going to be comfortable seeing like. A five percent increase uh at the local level. And I just think about smaller districts, how it might impact them. So, and. I mean, I hope you're not looking for a decision this evening because. That that's part of the problem with the SU budget. We want to make changes and move it to the local budget, but we don't see the local budget. Till later to really understand what the full impact is. And then our hands are slightly tied about what we can do at the local level because we've already obligated funds.
So this. So these are funds that are already budgeted local in all of our, in all of our districts.
Okay.
So our proposal is to.
Well, the first one would be a cost, is a cost change though, you said, for those.
Yes, I had the first bullet, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, but for the second item, this is just a shift, the sort of to the similar to the shift we did a few years ago. It's taking funds. From in the local budget, it's moving funds from, you say, your software line or your dues and fees line and moving that to your assessment line. That's the change at the local level. At the SU level, we're now going to be paying these, so we need to increase your SU budget and we're increasing the assessment to offset it. But the net in, the net cost to the district should be zero.
Okay, and there should technically be a savings then, right? That that's what I'm hearing also.
Uh, y- yes, not a savings. Yes, I mean, we've already been paying these prices because we've been funding this through ESER. Uh, so the sixty five thousand dollars that were.
Right, but what you're, you said, you, what you said was that if you're buying them at a block, there should be a cost saving. So. I'm not looking at ESER, like to me, ESER is like the anomaly, right? We have to take that and move that to the side. But if we make this switch and make this change and you're making all these purchases at the SU level. Then there should be a cost savings for us because we're only purchasing at the SU. Proctor's not purchasing, while Springs is a per, like, right?
We, we experienced that cost decline when we started funding things through ESER and alternative sources during the start of COVID.
Okay.
It's just that once you start paying things that reoccur annually. You really do have to get the, either the central office budget or the local budgets used to those kind of program increases. You know, or, you know, or else, you know, it's one big lump sum of like, oh, we can't pay for this through external means anymore. So it's like a way of like gradually easing into it.
Right. Lance?
Uh, well, I'm just curious for Ira. I know that Louis, you you referenced that every district has. These costs already in our budgets, but I believe that wouldn't be the case for us.
Was called the fiscal, right? Is that part or no?
Uh, well, the fiscal piece has been part of our budget for s- since forever. So, I mean. So that's not a change. It's more the curriculum and the technology ones.
Correct. So. Well, how would that impact the Ira budget? Since that's not something I believe that we currently are contributing towards.
Uh, so currently, if it was part of the assessment, uh, you're paying two point two eight percent of the assessment. So you would be paying two point two eight percent of the sixty five thousand.
Great, thank you.
Which is roughly fourteen eighty two.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Yes. You know, that or generally.
Well, just about the budget.
Anything on the general?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I have two. Uh, let's see, let's find my picture. On the uh. Tuition reimbursement, we've gone from four sixty to two thousand. That being on that page three, under rental revenue.
So four sixty what was spent last year, two thousand is what was budgeted last year.
Sure, okay.
So we, the budget has remained constant. It was just not fully utilized. And so that's just, I, I just, I'd like to point that out as well. And it's not just the SU budget, but all of our budgets. I mean, a budget is just an estimate. I mean, I think we do a pretty good job of um being diligent about not spending what we don't need to spend and and that's. Uh, the proof in that is the the surpluses that we have every year. So I mean, we sh- we we scrutinize all the expenses that that come across my desk. Um, or that come across any of the administrators. Um, so uh it's just to be cautious to make sure. So I mean, someone has, can take up to three credits and those are or six credits and. Uh, that's at, there's a cost associated. We don't budget a hundred percent of that liability. Uh, but we do. Uh, typically for the tuition reimbursement, we budget about fifty percent of that liability.
And I was gonna notice the same thing in a travel is that uh, um. There was a, there's an expense and then there's a budget amount, just showing that that it looks like there's. Um, budgeting is good, but there is fiscal responsibility in that. Coming back to the first page though, when you talked about um. Uh, let's see, the uh ten percent increase in health insurance. If that were to go to fifteen percent, what do you think that would be? Somewhere around thirty two to thirty five?
Twenty two thousand for the ten percent, so it would be about thirty three thousand.
Thirty three thousand, yeah, okay. Okay.
And hopefully we'll have more information about that by the next meeting, but really at the mercy of, with a bit on that.
Well, some of the stuff is absolutely not under your control. I think reasonable budgeting for, just in those two cases where. You've made it available, capable necessarily. We haven't really needed to use it, so that's showing good responsibility.
So did you answer um why the amount of the curriculum software on three was less than what we spent in twenty twenty three?
Plus.
I'm sorry if I missed. I I know that you are bringing all the curriculum under that.
So in the past, the infinite campus was actually being coded to the curriculum line, which is fifty one thousand dollars. And we are, if you look at page six, I've moved that to technology because that's more of an infrastructure cost.
So this is a change, look out, just a change, it's just a change of money, but it's just a change of allocation as to where it go.
It's just more accurate. It's, it doesn't actually deliver curriculum. It's just permanent records, grading, attendance, emergency. Operations, things like that.
So we're gonna go.
Yeah, sure.
So is that part of the budget now? This page that's different than the rest?
It's not in the budget yet, not good.
Oh, it's not in the budget yet?
No.
Then what is the forty thousand?
So the forty. The forty and the seven, the forty, the five thousand on the professional services, the forty on the curriculum software. And the seven on the, on their technology software is sort of those accumulated or what we were using in the past. In the prior year's budget. So that comes to fifty two thousand, that's what we spent last year. So shifting things around and our, based on the proposal to add in those sixty five thousand would cover us a hundred percent of what's on you. On page six. I took the sixty five thousand all out of technology, but there's some shifts going. There's the, there's some chips. The the fund, the dollar amount is the same, but the coding is.
So under curriculum, it's only part of, you moved the other part of, like the other thirty five thousand somewhere else. So you're saying.
You're saying that.
Exactly, a reduction in the budget. So the other thirty five is out of the budget. We're reducing.
We're not worried about having that costing. You, you are confident that reducing what we had budgeted before. Will be fine with sharing curriculum.
Co- correct. So I mean, if the bu- if the board does not approve increasing the sixty five thousand, then what's here. Is sufficient, but the other sixty five thousand in technology, software will be billed back to the districts or charged directly to the districts. Based on the invoices that we get. But we feel that this budget is sufficient, other than that sixty five thousand in software, which would all be under the technology.
And you said that you didn't put any staffing increases in this budget?
I didn't say that. We can discuss that in the second session.
Oh, I thought you did say that.
There's no staffing changes, so there's no increase in FTEs.
In number of.
Employees.
Thank you.
If I, I may have said that incorrectly, but.
Okay. Is that, I was gonna say it looks different.
Our exit, our staffing increases, but I meant no increases.
My number of staffs. Thank you. Just clarifying.
Linda, Amanda, Eric, Meredith, any questions about the budget? Or Louis's proposals?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed a huge chunk of it.
Can you repeat yourself, Eric?
I think you didn't hear what Louis said, maybe.
No, I I said I I missed a huge chunk of it, so.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, um, so I can go on special ed and then we can circle back around and see if there's any additional questions. Um, so page one showed the summary of changes for special education and then starting on page seven is more details. Um. So, I mean, as we all know, stat uh special is a lot less uh constant. There's many variables. Uh, each year that change with students moving in and out, whatever the the demographics are for our issue at the time. Currently, what's in here is special ed budget uh assessment is up by approximately five percent, which is equal to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Majority of the increases are due to contracted wages and benefits, uh, as well as increases in tuition and transportation due to. Unanticipated costs which are still being evaluated. So I mean, we've had a lot of, I think, students move in this year and unanticipated changes. Um, and I think Bill and his team are still working out the details as to. Uh, it's still early in the year and uh what is actually going to remain. Uh, what's in this budget is going to remain for next year and what's not. Uh, those are things that are still being worked out. So. Um, I I think we still have some work to do with and reviewing special ed, but we wanted to have something to present to you tonight. Um. And so we don't anticipate, um, hopefully nothing, this is, hopefully this is worst case scenario. And we will see what, what we can bring to you next, next month. But there are. A lot could change in the month with special ed, um, and a lot could change after we set the budget. So. But we have had surpluses in the past, uh, so hopefully, uh, we continue to to budget um well on as well. Um, and so I'll just go, continue to go through these and then we'll let Bill give a little bit more feedback. Uh, total staffing is up by three FTE and the details on that is on page twelve. That's the the last page. Those three FTE is the staff for the wellness center. Um, and and the staff cost for this program is being offset by tuition savings. So if those students were not at the wellness center and we didn't have those staff members, those students would be tuitioning out to other schools. And and so the cost impact i- in essence is a a net zero. Um, instead of them being tuitioned out somewhere, we're running an in-house program. Uh, child count increased by nineteen students this year. Uh, we use uh. For that data, we're using the child count as of December two thousand twenty two. Uh, we can, we have a one year lag because the this, this year's child count is not available yet. Uh, so when you're three thirteen to three thirty two, definitely that is having an impact on our costs and increase in students definitely impacts. The amount we're paying out. Uh, ten percent increase in health insurance is also built in here, which is approximately a hundred one thousand dollars. Uh, and then the last item, uh, just some revenue items that are in here are our estimate by this point. We don't have all the information from the state. Uh, the big one would be that that block grant that we received the. Um, so on page uh, page seven, you can see the details. The top section is all our revenues. Uh, the first section is your assessments. Uh, but then uh that third s- sort of section right there is our state revenue. And that big one, the census block grant, that is just an estimate at this time. Um, so hopefully that that will actually be hired, but I I'm not really sure about that right now. Uh, that first line item, just uh, I think it's worth pointing out extraordinary reimbursement. So a lot of. And like Bill has talked about this in time, we have students that, um, we tuition out that have a high cost. Uh, but we do receive a high threshold of reimbursement back for those students above and beyond uh the census block grant. Uh, so page seven through eleven is just the details of the special ed budget. I'm not going to go through that line by line. There's a a lot of, definitely a lot of changes. Uh, I mean, but staffing i- is, other than those three staff members, is the same as last year. Um, on page eleven, you can see the totals as well as the assessment and how it breaks down. So I'll turn it over to Bill. Bill, see if you have anything you'd like to add as far as more details or corrections, clarifications.
I think you did a really good job, Louis. Um, you know, I think the the overall point is that we had a lot of unanticipated. Students moving in for various reasons, the first month of school, um, kind of trying to catch up with those students. Um, so I think we'll have a much better presentation in November. Um, but overall, it's just a high student need.
May I ask a question also?
So yeah, we'll take questions and then after the questions, I'd be looking for, we we would be looking for some direction as to. What you want us to to change or add, delete uh for the next budget.
Can you explain that changes in transportation, both for the plant operations and regular one on page nine?
Um, so transportation, um, we, there is a great need and Bill can definitely provide more details, but. Uh, transportation has increased significantly this year for special ed and um. Uh, there's, these are students that we're transporting in district and out of district. Uh, Bill, do you want to talk more about?
Yeah, yeah, we are uh tran- transporting students around the district. Um, and um, you know, as our out of district placements uh increased at the beginning of the year, so did the amount of transportation. We had to add. Um, so it's, no, it it's always hard because they are reimbursable. Uh, the transportation goes directly to the tuition students that um are out of district placed. So it it does look larger, but we do get a a good reimbursement rate for that. Um, we are talking about transportation. Um, one of the things we are looking for, and we will have more details here, goes on as we did create. Uh, K six, which which I am happy to report. If you do look in the K six, um, so far we have had no new students in K six. All our out of district placements have been grade six and up. So we will be look at doing some seven through twelve district work. Um, but if the more district in. In district work we do, the more the in district transportation we have to do.
So, and I think Bill mentioned it, but just to reiterate that, so most of our transportation costs is for those students that are falling within that extraordinary reimbursement. And and so for those students, we get ninety five percent of every, every dollar that's over sixty five thousand dollars. And then we also get on top of that. And then we also get on top of that approximately another thirty-eight thousand dollars that's covering the first sixty-five thousand, above and beyond the census block grant. And that's all part of that line on page seven, that extraordinary reimbursement line. Uh, with seven hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, um, so actually, if I have some notes.
It does seem like a, a, a significant increase, particularly since we purchased all the vans that we could transport our own, you know.
Wellness center to decrease in amount of.
Yeah, so, I guess, and maybe it's a discussion for executive session, but I feel like we're missing a piece of the equation.
So let me ask what you're thinking about that, is the in-district not reimbursable?
I'm sorry, is in-district not reimbursable?
In-district.
In-district.
Uh, so typically, the, in our experience, the kids that are in district are not falling above that threshold of sixty-five thousand dollars. Um, it's really the students that we're tuitioning out to say a VAC or Long, Long Trail or Lehigh, that, cause you have the tuition cost of anywhere between forty to eighty thousand dollars and then on top of that, you have additional costs of transportation or additional services that may be occurring. Um, so, but as far as the, the, the previous question about transportation, so, I mean, the vans are used in, being used ma- mostly for students that are within our schools and transporting them to programs within our schools from, like, say, we have Rutland Town students that are going to West Rutland or we have special ed students that are going to, say, um, programs i- in the communities. Uh, but we're not using the vans to transport students that we may be, if we have, say, a Polley student going to VAC. We're not transporting that student with our vans. Um, at, at this time, we don't have the, the, both, the, the staffing capacity, um, or, or the van capacity to, to take on those transportations, is that accurate, Bill?
That is accurate, also, that, um, I did, uh, was remiss to say that, uh, in the past, uh, Lehigh did transportation. Um, over the summer, Lehigh lost, or actually, early, uh, late spring, Lehigh lost their transportation. So that added all our Lehigh students, uh, for us to transport that we did not in the past. Um, and that, that's generally tends to be a little more expensive because if we're transporting to Rutland, you know, from the, um, surrounding towns, a little less, but trying to get out to Polley, uh, we'll be in charge, uh, a little bit more.
Eric?
Uh, yeah, so I, I just had a question about transportation, um, so i- in the budget is, are you factoring in like, uh, uh, like, I think you, you had talked about, uh, what transportation might cost, um, like that, or well-spring meeting a couple of months ago, so is that, like, just kind of factored in before we see a, a, a transportation contract come through?
No, so we're, we're talking right now just special ed transportation, so the transportation you're referring to would be, um, regular, and those would be local, we wouldn't discuss that here, those are local discussions, the budget is at the SU level, but it doesn't impact the SU budget at all, it's, um, only impacts local budgets.
Okay, all right, yeah, and that, my question was pertaining to, uh, general, you know, not, not specialized.
See, I believe you, you mentioned two spots in the budget that you had a question on, so one was page nine, what was the other page?
Uh, well, page nine, there was the options of eighteen thousand above the transportation line, and that's new. I was just curious what that was.
What, what, what line is that?
So I got that, so actually, I, I just, I copied a line, so that is the rent for the wellness center. Um, so that is planned operations, but I had just co- copied the code and I, I neglected to change it. But that is the row bonus center, the rent there is twenty-four thousand dollars, but we're currently covering that to ESER and ESER goes through September thirtieth, so I figured we would spend, pay the first three months out of ESER funds and then the remaining nine months would be in the special ed budget. I will correct that for the next.
And then in executive session, possibly, if that would be better, the, uh, difference in, uh, IA wages for triple E versus regular SE? So that would be two. Seven, yes, seven, under SE teacher, teacher, or SE IA wages and then page ten, EEI, which is the second. I was just curious, if they're, why they're so different?
You, what the, what's, how?
Well, one went up and one went down, I was just curious, what, is it, are there less?
Our IAs, there's, we have the same number of IAs in right, there right now, but we have different IAs. Um, so it, it could be changes in. So if you, if you actually look at what our actual was, even the one thousand seventy-seven, or one million seventy-seven is more than our actuals. So, I mean, we have.
You just don't anticipate going higher, even if.
Not at this time.
And then.
We estimate, we estimate for any, we're estimating that we're using, gonna use the same IAs next year that we have in place today. And IAs is one of our most, um.
I mean, we're still looking for some, right?
We are, and those are the ones that we see the most turnover in, in those positions, so.
And then for triple E, the same thing, it went up quite a bit compared to what the actual was for twenty-three.
That was just based on a need, probably, I mean, we, we tried to bunch it best we can, um, but we had some, um, children that we didn't, uh, realize would need pairs of sport that came in to our triple E, so we just had to reallocate, uh, pairs down there.
So if you're looking at line two on page ten, you're looking at the IA wages that you're referring to? Yeah, so I, I think so, in last year, we had one, this is one, I think, probably, right now, I think we have four or five. This is if, and it's no budget impact, but I, I mean, I had this discussion with Bill today, it's like, how many do you wanna put in pre-K? Cause a lot of, some of the pre-K students that we have, that may have pairs right now, maybe in kindergarten next year, but we don't know what, what the new needs will be in pre-K, so. I mean, we're budgeting for a certain number of pairs, uh, it may be, we have less in pre-K and more in K through twelve. Um, but we, we're going with this number, i- it won't impact the budget, but it may impact how much gets coded to triple E versus how much gets coded to special ed. But again, it's all, it's all an estimate, I mean, we don't know what our needs are going to be next year, um, we can only, based, based on, or tomorrow. We only ask guests based on what we know today.
On page nine, can you just tell us where it says, uh, special ed, other support wages, it's an increase of sixty-one thousand dollars, what does that encompass?
The first one.
Support services?
That is, um, that is the wellness, one of the wellness center staff members. So support wages are our behaviorists, there are evaluators.
So that's an additional staff member, that's a.
One of the three additional staff members. So we have, on page twelve, we have three additional staff members that are, so one of them is a teacher, one of them is a parent and one of them is a behavior person.
Okay. And so I guess on that same page, on page nine, what says, um, administrative wages in the hundred and eight thousand dollar increase is one of them in that also?
No, that is, we have one staff member who's currently being funded out of PESR funds, that will be moving to the special ed budget.
And can you tell us who that is?
Uh, it's one of the new, uh, what are we calling them, it's the LEA, um, it's.
Coordinators.
Or, it's the coordinator, one of the coordinator positions, do you want the actual name, the person's name?
No, 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 no.
One of the coordinator positions.
Okay.
Uh, last year, we had an assistant director and we moved, we eliminated that and moved the two coordinators or, uh, LDAs, um, so it's one of those, one we're funding uh, currently in special ed and one is funded through ESER.
Okay.
With the intent that that would be moving to special ed.
Okay, and what, BSTRS, OPE, N S A N T O.
Uh, so it's, uh, it's VSTRS, so that is the teacher's retirement system, and so if you have a, a teacher that's funded out of the general fund, the state pays for the teachers, we, teachers' retirement, the, the teacher pays their portion, but the state pays the remaining amount. Uh, probably about five or six years ago, they made the change that the state didn't wanna pay, uh, their portion anymore for teachers that are funded through federal dollars. So any teachers we have funded through the IDB grant, we have to pay that through the IDB grant and it's roughly twenty-five percent of their salary that we're, we're paying in, so, and, and I, I believe everyone here is, has been through the budget cycle before, but I'll, I'll just go over it again as far as special ed. So we fought, we, we budget in the budget lines, the gross special ed costs. But when you look at the actuals, you might see a lot of zeros under the actual columns, um, on this budget, uh, where we have budgets for FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four, and the reason behind that is because, uh, uh, if you look at one of the revenue items, we have approximately seven hundred thousand dollars in grant revenue, uh, through the IDB grant. And, um, like I said, we budget at gross, which includes all costs, whether it's funded through state funds, federal funds, or, um, or, or local funds, and, but when the actuals hit, if we're funding them through IDB, they're not hitting in the actual column. So for those teachers that are funded through the IDB grant, we are paying that twenty-five, additional twenty-five percent for VSTRS, but that is not showing up in the actual column, cause it's hitting the federal grant.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll be looking for some feedback and direction for the next meeting. And if you would like to wait until after we talk in executive session.
I think that would probably be a good idea, yeah, I think that's gonna have some impact on direction.
Would you just ask if it's possible that we get this, like, a little earlier than the day of the meeting? Cause I really like to sit through and digest and it's hard to do it while I'm also trying to listen to you.
Uh, you will have the next version earlier, um, you didn't get it today, cause that's when it was, it got finished five minutes before it was sent out. We met as a administrative group today at two o'clock and, and made some last-minute changes, uh, and I presented it to the administrative group and um, got their feedback, we made the changes and I made those changes as quickly as possible to get it out to you.
And, and I can't stress enough, and thank you, Louis, is how, uh, uh, shifty, um, special ed has been this first month for, for a variety of reasons, so we were really just wanting to kind of wait, even just this last week, things were moving around, uh, quite rapidly.
All right.
All right, so, switch, I, we'll go into ESER next, I represent, yeah, I mean, I, I didn't do a good job of moving my document, but. Also included in the packet was an ESER update. Uh, so in the update, I, I broke it into categories, um, by function and then I provided details of what's included in the function. Um, not a lot of details, but it is, and I definitely would take questions if anyone has, has them, um. Some of these things that you might see on the details were things that we had in the original grant, but that we took out, but I did leave them in there so that you kind of have some sense as to what our, what we were planned to fund with them, um, so then I included what we budgeted per function. Uh, and then what our total expenses to date, um, so we just started spending ESER three this year, July first. Um, up until that point, we were using ESER. Wait, no. Let me see here, sorry. No, I'm sorry, we started using ESER three last year, um, uh, so that includes last year and this year. And then I have what our forecast is of what we plan to spend based on the current amendments that are in the grant, what's remaining on spent. Um, and when I say remaining on spent is, it's, it's not really on spent, cause even the forecasts have been spent, but it's unallocated uh, based on the, our current amendments, as an administrative group, we've talked, um, a little bit of additional amendments that need to go in um, to cover some of the initiatives that we've already, um, are planning, um, so some of the, the onspent money is already accounted for, uh, but it has not been put into the grant yet. Um, so just to go through this by function, I'll, um, so instruction, uh, which has funded several different of those positions, um. Some of the, many of the ideas that we've had and positions that we've put in there, we have not been able to fill or we fill them, um, and we plan to fill them for three years, but they either, uh, have left, um, or have shifted to different positions and, and every time that happens, we, we end up with money on spent, and so we've had to make a lot of changes. And, and that's one of the main reasons why we have so much on spend at this point, is because we've had a, we've had to do many amend, I think I'm on amendment, um, I've finished amendment seven, so our next amendment would be number eight, so every time we, um, our plans change, we have to fill and do a new amendment with the state and so we usually wait till we have three or four different changes, but uh, every time we have a position that we decide we're not gonna fill or somebody resigns and it's not, is it worth to fill it for half a year or a year? Um, we've taken money from those initiative, different initiatives. Uh, so for instruction, uh, so we have seven hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in that, uh, function, currently, we have a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars that's go- not going to be spent, uh, which could be reallocated, uh, health supplies, uh, we had twenty-one thousand, uh, which is all spent, uh, support, um, uh, which is SEL, behavior, uh, the summer after school coordinator, uh, we have a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars budgeted, uh, and we plan to have that money all spent. Um, again, we've shifted that many times because we have, I've been not been able to fill some of those positions. Curriculum, we have a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars budgeted, uh, and that should be all spent. Uh, PD, this is in the one area where we have money that needs to be reallocated, we have three hundred and ten thousand dollars budgeted. Uh, we have a hundred, currently planned to have a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars on spent. Technology, we had six hundred and ten thousand budgeted, we have seventy-one thousand dollars that could be reallocated. Uh, uh, another support section, which is more staff support, uh, we have a hundred and twelve thousand dollars budgeted, which will be completely spent. Uh, the LEA position, that's the one we discussed a little earlier during special ed, we have two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars budgeted and that will be spent. Uh, repairs, we have fifty thousand for air filters, um, we will have about forty thousand dollars there that we can reallocate. Um, this is the wellness center lease, um, uh, and then safety money, which will be all spent. Uh, the indirect expense, that's the amount we can pull out of the grant to go into the general fund, uh, we currently have three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars budgeted, we have not spent any of it. Um. And then subgrants, uh, we use the subgrants that, when the school is spending the money directly rather than at the SU level and that's used for the summer school, summer programs, you have the school programs, student enrichment, as well as contracted positions that work directly for the district and not for the SU. Um, so we had some positions that we were funding through ESER two that were contracted at the, the local level. Uh, when ESER two ran out, we do have those funds for those positions in the local budget, but because we have the ESER money available, we have been continuing to fund those through ESER three, which will result in local savings, uh, we have nine hundred and fifteen thousand budgeted for subgrants and we plan that we will have about a hundred and seventy-five thousand that can be reallocated. So the total, the total budget is three point six million dollars, we currently have about five hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars to be reallocated. Um, we, we believe that there'll probably be about two hundred, um, two hundred plus that of the five hundred thousand that we do not currently have any plan for, uh, which we're open to discussion with the board.
Can we just go back to curriculum, we're saying we funded the literacy coordinator, correct, not the curriculum coordinator? Correct?
Your curriculum is the literacy coordinator and the curriculum coordinator, but the curriculum coordinator position was never filled.
For two weeks.
So we expended all the money just on the literacy coordinator?
We had a literacy coordinator in place for one year, yes.
Two.
Uh, only one year through ESER three. So that's. So that's how we're about to ship. So that's an example. So that position was budgeted to go through completely through Esser three all three years, but that person left. So we had shipped those funds several rounds. Any questions?
When does it sunset? When is it?
Currently, sunset's September 30th, 2024.
And that means what? That we have to have it spent or we have to have it allocated?
We have to have it spent.
Anyone have any questions? Okay.
I feel, but I'll follow up next meeting on the message. Seems pretty deep. I guess I feel like that I feel like there should be some tangible thoughts on what this money can go towards, right? Versus like a position that we can only fund for a year versus something that maybe has a 20 year life or 10 year life or something like that, right?
Right. I mean, we don't want to add any new positions unless it's something that's an emergency mandated. That would normally be funded locally. If it's a new, something new that would be funded locally, but it's something we need. But it wouldn't make sense to create a new position at this point because it's going to be less than a year that this will be in place. Especially by the time you find some money and hire them. And then we anticipate as we have just budget discussions locally, that these funds will kind of come into play as we look at how to offset expenses, you know, moving into next year as well. Things we can take care of now.
Okay.
So the next piece under finance is moving expenses. So in the packet was an expense report of what we've spent to date on moving expenses. So as of a couple of days ago, when I ran this, we had spent $25,131. Eight thousand of that is tech supplies. 15,000 of it is moving professional services, which is about half of that is our moving company. And then another large chunk was an electrician that I didn't think did all the cabling. Correct? Is that what you said? Cabling for the internet cable? And then moving supplies is approximately $900 and that's just miscellaneous items that we've needed for the new place.
Any questions about the moving expenses? Okay. What else you got?
That's it. Under finance.
Okay.
Want to talk about the other two items in executive session, please? Something very after school.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll send, did you already send the link to them?
Yes.
So people that are online, Chris has sent a link to, but we'll go into executive session when we finish to well, move the two old business topics, the F24 substitute P rate and the after school and summer programming to executive session. Because those have obviously contract and financial components to that. And negotiations, correct? All right. So curriculum proposal. No. Oh, maybe in the drive. I didn't see it though.
I did not see it.
I can, I'll drop it in and just sort of set it.
Okay, curriculum, right?
We go before Louis next time.
Everybody's in a good mood, right? Money talk. If you're looking for a way to if you're looking for a way to spend some money from Esser, we have some ideas. So as I think most of you have been on the board blog at the to know what we've recently completed, what we consider kind of like phase one of our curriculum work. We have priority indicators in every grade level. We have documents that support teachers in developing effective learning targets and assessing for those indicators. They're all live. Teachers participate in the development of them across the grades, across content areas. And they're they're up and available. So that was a big step forward for our supervisory union. And this year, we had intended to have a curriculum coordinator. The board had appointed one for us. And we had hired someone and then they took this other principal gig in some schools in the south or not unnamed. And we had no curriculum coordinator. So in the summer of the admin retreat, we were talking about the curriculum work at the supervisory union and sort of our our plan A is not going to happen the way we thought this year. So what's what's plan B? And how do we take advantage of the resources that we do have right now to move this work forward? So we looked at some of the state guidance around education quality standards around curriculum. The Act 173 memos around what a coordinated curriculum should look like according to the agency of education and their standards for a coordinated curriculum session. We did that with the admin team. And had some great conversations about it. And then Jen had this really long drive on her way to Waddington. And a lot of travel time and downtime. So she started drafting this proposal with, you know, okay, here are some ways that we could come across and go about this work this year and and different options and different plans or how do we how do we make, you know, lemonade out of the lemons and make sure that we're advancing this work in in different ways? And given that the board had already designated funds for this work or the curriculum coordinator position, we're coming here with these these proposals and these ideas tonight to have you take a look at them and tell us what direction you would like the admin team to go in terms of advancing that work. Now, obviously, without any of this, we're going to continue advancing that work as a team, right? Like we're going to chip away at it and take pieces and and continue the work. It's it. I think these proposals, if I had to define them, it's really about what is the speed and intensity with which we do that work? And for obvious reasons, the more resources we have, the faster we go and the more intensely we go. And the less resources we have, the slower we go and the less intensely we go. It's a very simplistic overview of what we're presenting tonight. But our our goals, we have strategic plan goals in the areas of curriculum work. Again, we're committed to moving those forward as best we can, given the change in plans that we've experienced. But we want to have an overarching curriculum framework of a really visual and clear framework that people can understand what is our curriculum development process? How is that going to work over time? You know, how does it integrate with the other pieces of our work? And trying to make that visual and clear to all parties, top to bottom. So we're we're going to work on developing that. We, our teachers now are teaching these curriculum documents, some of them for the first time. And so they are now having conversations with each other about, hey, did you teach this unit? I did. I'm not quite sure if this is the right learning target. What I used when I was teaching it was this or my data looked like this. I think we should look at this again and see if we can come up with something better. And as we are looking at them, our admin team going into classrooms, seeing what teachers are teaching, going back to the curriculum documents and looking at what's there and saying like, I I think that we I think we missed something or I think that we could look at this one again and deepen it. So just again, great revision. We're supposed to revise, right? We make a draft of something and then we're supposed to make it better. That's what we're doing. So we're going to continue to engage with that work this year and improving what we've already started. We'll see what comes out from VITCAF, as I mentioned during my report. We don't know yet what formative assessment resources might be out there comparable to what we have with Sback. So if we are able to access those and there is a good alignment with our curriculum, then we will make that explicit and expected for teachers. So they know that we should be using those tools and resources and we'll support that process. And then we really want to be working on common proficiency skills and performance tasks. So now you have the same priority indicators, you have the same expectations for what you're trying to teach and what level you're trying to assess it. So now let's make the assessment tool that is going to ensure that when all of our third grades cross supervisory union are working on this standard, we're assessing them in a comparable way and are able to share back that data and make sure that they're all making progress according to our standards. So some of our goals that we're working toward. And we know that regardless of whether or not we have a curriculum or needed position, as we said, our work is going to continue. We have a need for this work to continue and we currently have money allocated through Esser to support this position or this work. And I said all of these things. So Jen is going to talk me through some of the various proposal ideas that we came up with. And then lots for your feedback on.
So basically what Lisa was talking about us doing is proposal one is kind of status quo on what we have planned for this year. We have district in-service days with the whole district where we are working on curriculum in like two hour chunks. We have about, we have one coming up on Friday, then we have another in March, then we have one at the end of the year. And so this is just saying that's the time that we're going to do this. Admin can do it at their discretion in their building. But we will have all those things kind of all set up for people. And then the next sort of tier up for this or like a little bit more would be the next proposal, which it, oh, excuse me, thank you. There are pros and cons to those, to both of those options.
Do you want to go through those?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I forgot that. So basically, if we did this, it's not going to cost any additional money for this to happen. It's already all set out. Principals in their buildings can decide like, I know that this is needed in my building and I'm going to use this time. It's sort of a less strategic way to to go about curriculum work. It will definitely take longer. We might have start experiencing some of the things where like we have little one offs happening because teachers get really engaged with a certain thing. And then it's harder to kind of get all those people back on the same page. And then the quality of those programs sort of is embedded by the whole administrative team. So those are the pros and cons of that. The second proposal is just like we had done about two years ago, we have another curriculum team come together. We use after school time. We do this during the school year. It could have a little bit of summer work at the end of this summer as well. And then we provide stipends for those PLC leaders, which is sort of in line with a strategic plan of growing leaders from within. And then we have everything. Plus, we do a little bit more review. It kind of goes before a committee process of like, is this something we're going to do, which is part of the curriculum process that it should have a vetting to after it's done. And that's just sort of a step up from what we had done before. And then it's a more focused work group. This moves a little bit quicker. Obviously, there's going to be costs associated with this work. And that not all teachers are involved and knowledgeable about it. So we are doing, when I say these things, we always are going to do one. We would add two and one together. So we have teachers during district in-service days. Now we're adding another layer of vetting of that work and looking it over. There are some things that are already out there and we need to maybe have some quality control on those things as far as teachers decided this. Now we need to be looking those over in alignment with some of the other resources that are available out there. And then the third proposal is to create a task force led by an administrator. That administrator would be me. And I'm sort of doing this work outside of my school hours. My instructor will always come first. And then, but some of this work needs someone that maybe has a little bit more expertise in the area of curriculum, has a little bit more focus on looking over these documents. And we would also be paying teachers to do this work outside of a contract and hopefully make greater process, progress in this work. So when the admin team had got together this summer, we kind of said like, what's our pie in the sky goal for this? And we would hopefully, I want to, you know, under promise and over deliver to you guys, but we would kind of get closer to that pie in the sky goal of what the admin team had talked about. And we did talk about all three of these with all of the admin in the district. And they they agree that this is probably the best focus for us to try to get all this done within this year while we have some resources to devote to it. And there are some pros and cons of that, obviously. It would be additional responsibilities for me. It it would cost more money. But then I do think it it would get us to a point where districts of this size are typically at, you know, with curriculum, it's always going to be a process. We're always going to be reviewing it. One of my previous districts, they're currently going through a process again where they're reviewing curriculum. And so it's not a one stop shop. We are going to have to do this, but once we have a stronger foundation and things have been vetted clearly, it will be just, it will be able to be done in a better way going forward.
Thank you, Jen.
Questions? Comments?
I guess one question. Do you want this responsibility?
Yeah, so I should have said, I should have said going forward. No one asked me to come up with this proposal. I happen to be for a load. I I I think that we need it. I was super excited that the board had decided on having this position because I think that we we need the work to be done. A lot of things that I do as a building admin are contingent on us all deciding on, you know, math programs and making some decisions on the standards we're going to teach. And so I think if all of those things are kind of set out, it will actually make buildings, building admins jobs easier to assess because it's already articulated and embedded.
Will all of the extra costs be covered by Esser?
We already have existing strategies in Esser that support this.
So are you asking for a decision tonight?
Ideally, if the board is prepared to provide one. Otherwise, it just puts us another month into the school year, but that that's okay too.
So Linda, our recommendation would be proposal three. Obviously, the board can choose to support that or move forward. I know that there there will be some frustration around curriculum, but this is something that needs to get done. I know that to be look at strategic plan and there are a lot of foundational pieces and for for many reasons, this is not been completed and we have to get this done. I think, you know, and I know I had a long conversation with Jen about this when she spoke to me about this proposal. And I think it was a similar reaction to what Tina said and like, do you really want this? Like, you know, but I think, you know, you're someone who has a passion for curriculum, sees the need for this. But this will not just be on the the shoulders of just Jen and Lisa. I think, you know, that the admin will be responsible for this because I think as, you know, as an admin team, you know, every administrator, myself included, has a curriculum aspect to it. We have to, you know, really embrace curriculum leadership and have a better understanding. But having worked in many different districts over by 30 plus years, I think one of the things that has been frustrating is that we do not have that foundational piece of curriculum yet here where if we have any new teachers, we're looking to recruit and hire new teachers. You know, that when they walk in, we should have a strong, you know, curriculum documents in place for them to provide that foundational framework for us to move forward with. And as Jen had said, and Lisa had said about the curriculum cycle, it is an important work that each year we engage in this, but we, you know, we need to have this this skeletal framework that runs across our SU that allows us to, you know, better a lot of resources, you know, we look at, you know, programs, the staffing. So, you know, we do, we just talked about, you know, said, you know, we have money that we're trying to figure out how to spend and if this allows us to at this time next, you know, but by June or July of, you know, next year to have this done, have this foundational piece, I think it's money well spent. I think our our staff will benefit, our students will benefit, our communities benefit, but it's something which we have to do and I think we have to be aggressive. But but I did assure, you know, Jen and Lisa that this is something that's not going to just say, well, good luck and just let us know where at that we we all have to work on this as well together. So.
Okay. And so you're advocating for the third, number three.
I I think, Linda, that we we have the funding for this. We have the willingness, we have willing participants. And I, we we needed this done a year or two ago and we, you know, we can't keep on delaying this any further. I think it's just, it's, you know, so I think if we have a plan that will get us to this point, you know, so as we're sitting next year, we're now, we have a SU curriculum framework in place that our students and our staff will benefit from. I think it's something which we we do have done.
How do you all feel? But I am a great supporter of curriculum. And I mean, I've been a teacher before where it was very loosey goosey. And that was a difficult, it was difficult to deal with it. So I'm in favor Um, and that was a difficult, it was difficult to deal with it. So I, I'm in favor. Of going with, you know, if we haven't had it and we need it, I think we should do it. But that's my opinion. How does everybody else feel?
How will you select teachers and how many teachers are we looking at selecting?
Uh, we haven't gotten into the exact specifics of that yet, just sort of pending which direction we go and. What, what it is exactly that we're able to support. But, you know, our, our last, we have K to twelve. All content areas. So what we, what we try to not have is we try to not have one teacher. Representing and doing all the work for an entire discipline or an entire grade level. Um, because then you only have one person's perspective on that work and, and it really is beneficial to have. Teams that are working together and sometimes they can be grades fans, like you could have a K two team working on social studies frameworks together. You know, with at least one teacher from each grade level. We like to in our old other curriculum. Um, groups, we tried to have a cross section across the G R C S U schools. That all our schools are represented as best we can. Really trying to make it an inclusive process so that. No one feels like it's something that's being forced on them from people who, who don't work with them closely. Um, but if we, you know.
Isn't that the essence of the admin oversight? We've already kind of done this work, right? We, we've done this for, we've paid teachers. We tried with P L Cs. We tried during the summer. We paid. We were doing curriculum mapping. We're doing this. We're doing that. So we should have some level of framework, right? Because we just said that teachers are teaching to it, correct? So it's not like we're starting from scratch. So it sounds to me like that the essence of this work is really looking at what teachers have put forward. And having those with a higher level of expertise, maybe scrutinize that a bit more. Because while it's great that as a teacher, you're saying this is what I want to teach. There's also a standard to teach you. There's also the proficiency to teach to. There's also having that consistency across whatever. If I'm teaching English one or whatever. So I don't want to get, I guess, lost in the weeds with worrying about. Um, the teachers. I, I, I want to see it reese to a higher level. With more admin oversight with making those decisions and saying like, yeah, this is great. You have these things. But when we look at data and we look at test scores and we look at what students are taking and we're looking where students are going. This is what we need to be teaching. And so to me, that comes more at that level, higher level. So.
Two slightly different pieces. One is the creation of materials and the second is that, that.
Well, we've created the materials, haven't we?
So we've created a, a, a guide, basically, an overview of each priority indicator. That gives teachers information about vocabulary, learning targets, um, level of rigor. And we used to have assessment linked in and then S back changed to the cap, but we're hoping to put that, that piece back in as we go forward. Um, well, there's a still a, a next step of generation, creation of materials. Things like proficiency scales, which would be like a rubric where everyone is. Now, now we've taught fractions, right? Or adding and subtracting fractions. And now it's time to assess how our students did on adding and subtracting fractions. We want an assessment tool that is the same everywhere so that one teacher isn't just saying. Can you add fractions, you know, just using the algorithm? And another teacher is saying, can you add fractions using concrete, you know, and abstract?
I guess for me, that's where the higher level admin comes, making, making those kind of oversight decisions rather than. Because if I'm a teacher, if I'm a teacher, I'm teaching what I'm comfortable with in my classroom. So what I, what my expectation is that proposal three is doing is going. A tier above and having that oversight. I, I guess my other question is. And, and I don't, we've sat here and heard like, this is what we're going to do. It's going to be ready in June. This is what we're going to do. It's going to be ready in August. So if we do this and we know that S R money is, are we saying September twenty twenty four is our drop dead? Time because that's when S R money is gone?
And a part of this work also has to be like the plan to carry it forward without the S R money because it's going away, right? So like, part of what the framework is, is like, when there's no money, how, how are we supporting the curriculum revision cycle? And looking at this going forward so that, because it's not going to fall from the sky, right? So that framework provides you that structure of after twenty twenty four, this is what we're doing for the next, you know. Part of the strategic plan is we have that done and we have that cycle available.
Right. And so that's going to be coming with part of this project also?
Yeah.
Okay, because I feel like we've kind of been through this cycle, not with the higher level. But through the cycle before and then we get and we say, well, teachers don't want to come and do the work. And then, or we're only going to do, you know, nine through twelve or something like that. So I just want to be really clear on what our expectations are. So that when the, it comes back, that we're, we are all on the same page of, of what that is. That there's going to be administrative oversight, that when it comes back, it's essentially going to be. A project finished to move us forward. With the understanding and knowledge that we know, it's like policies. We're going to constantly be reviewing them. But along with that project, there's going to come in the binder some plan about. How you're going to review this. Are you going to take it in sections of, you know. K through whatever, are you going to do it, you know, in how you're going to break that down? So there's a constant, constant going all the time that, because. As many schools as we have and to keep things current, we can never let it just set on the shelf.
So Lisa, if the board is in support of proposal three, I'd recommend our, we said Jen, it's November seventh meeting to have a. Uh, a clear plan for this year, the timeline with, you know, it just is. Uh, you know, uh, what it's going to look like, you know, deliverables, uh, you know, and also, you know. If in springtime, you know, in April, March, April, we look at how we're going, I'm going to transition this out into, you know. Following years. Cause you're right, this, this is also not just a one time thing. This has created a culture within our schools or.
Yeah.
Cool, over a curriculum.
And so between.
Admins have to be heavily invested in this because they are going to have to do this work. As an app, and in New Jersey and Illinois. We had to do this work with our teachers within our regular professional development time. It was just always additional. With the exception of writing completely new curriculum, which somewhere down the road, we may have to engage in, but we're not doing that.
Right now.
Three to five years.
So, um, between now and the seventh, will you also have conversations with teachers about? About this work and then be able to gauge that level of interest too, when you come back to speak to us?
And we, I, I agree with that. You know, you, you're right about that, Lisa's that, um. There are teachers out there that are saying, you know, we've got good results with, with this. And so if you don't have them, you know, and they're, and they're, uh, the kids are doing well with that. You know, you do need to have their, um, their interests, their, you know, they're pushing to do what they need to do. So I, I agree, we do need some, um, the, you know, administration also saying though. This is how we're going to accomplish that. And, and hopefully you'll be on board with us to, to go forward with this. So I'd like, that is a great idea. To have some kind of a plan in November to bring forward.
So yes, I think we can, thank you Linda. I think we can, one, send out an email eliciting people that all also want to be a, I anticipated. Part of what I would be doing was working with admin to identify people in the buildings that have been engaged in some of this work. That are doing a great job with their curriculum. And then those people would potentially become those P L C leaders for teachers to work with. Because me saying it as administrator fits differently, hits differently than like collaboratively working with your colleagues. You want to grow that professionalism around.
Oh.
Um, curriculum as well. I do think that part of developing things is like that brainstorming. We do want a lot of teacher input at that level to brainstorm things. And then you're also right about, we also need someone with a fine tooth comb coming back in and saying. Okay, I, I've already done it this way, but this is probably better aligned with the scope and sequence that's over here. So I think both things have to happen at the same time right now.
Cause if you talk to them and see the results that they're getting, some of them, you know, are real tough. They push to, and, and they're on, they're on these kids and they know these kids and they are working. You know, very hard to get these kids to where they know that they should be. And, and those, I don't want to push those teachers over the edge because they're already pushing beyond the beyond. So it's nice to get them involved, but I don't want to lose their enthusiasm or their, you know, what, what, what's happening in their classrooms. It's, it's a, it, it's a, yeah, it's good. Keep going. I'm, I'm forwardless.
Amanda, did you have a question or comment?
I did, sorry. And then I thought maybe it was out of place, but I, I think, I think we're all right, right? Like y'all said, we're going to need a, a fine tooth comb and, and digger deeping and all of, all of that. I'm sorry. Um, but I think that maybe we should consider going back to a. Um, curriculum committee, like you, you compared it to policy and how it's going to be continuous work. And, and that is continuous work, but the policy committee does that work and reports back to us. And I think that if we don't. Even if we don't form it right now, but if we don't consider forming a curriculum committee again, now that we have a place to start from. We're going to find ourselves in these meetings every month, having these conversations for potentially an hour.
I feel policies within the scope of the school board. I don't know if curriculum is part of our. Scope, right? I mean, I don't know.
You have the right to review curriculum, but I think writing curriculum, that would not necessarily be.
Creating is, yeah.
Yeah.
Being sure that has the parts that we think it could have as a thing, but actually going through and writing each little.
So would everyone be in agreement that we can move this forward to the November meeting? And Lisa and Jen will come back with a, um, more defined proposal? With benchmarks and expectations, um. Other things you'd want to see in it?
Well, is, I guess the difference is, uh, do we want them to start now? Or do we want them to start in November after creating a better plan or more out, uh, clear?
I think I'm, I'm asking you to trust Jen and Lisa with proposal three, because I think we, we can't really wait a month or anything.
Should make a motion to approve three and have them report back with a little bit clearer understanding.
Okay, so there's a motion by Tina to support proposal three. Um, and still have a document come with a, a clear, um. Expectation of, of what this project will look like for the November seventh meeting, discussion.
If that's going to happen, I'd like to see who is participating and what they're participating in.
Teachers or, okay.
Who's doing what? See who's doing the work.
Okay. So is that something you think you would have by November seventh? Though that might be like.
Looking for teachers by name or teachers by role?
Or content area?
Maybe a little bit of all, but, because what I, what I want to see is a buy in. And for them to understand they, that, that it, this is, this is volunteer sort of, but in the end, it's your job. And you have a time to make some input on it. And if you don't, I don't want to hear about it. But I also want them to understand that. That they don't have the final say in it either. That goes back to what Jen was talking about is. That, yes, they may think they're on the right track, but somebody else may come in above them and say, ah, we need to adjust this here. So I really want to see who's participating, what school and what, you know, what areas curriculum. So we see what the numbers are.
Yeah. I'm not, I, I'm not quite sure we're going to have that, like a list of names by November seven. But I think that we'll have a plan that lists the, the kind of people, the rules, the expertise. The qualifications that we're looking for, for each of the areas of work. And probably shortly thereafter, maybe by the December meeting, we could have people actually signed up and ready to go. We have to have a very clear description of what we're asking you to do. Like if I said, hey Mike, you want to come over and do some curriculum work with me? You're going to have a couple of questions about that. You're going to be like, what am I saying yes to? When are we going to meet? How many hours? What like, oh, what, what's the goal of our work? And so I think we have to be able to develop that plan, bring that back to you and get feedback and finalize that plan. And then we can go back and say, hey, hey staff, this is exactly what we're looking for. This is what you'd be committing to. You know, with your expertise and your recommendation of your admin based on that expertise, like, are you in or out? And then we can come back.
Well, I think what this motion is saying though is that. We're buying into proposal three, i- i- if the motion passes. That the expectation is when you leave tonight, that tomorrow you're working on moving forward. That you're not waiting till November seventh to come back and say, November eighth, we're going to start working on this. That what you bring to us on November seventh is what you have created, but between now and November seventh.
You've already started.
You've already started. You're not, you're not waiting for us. That's my understanding. Am I wrong? Okay.
Kind of two things, like the, the combing over of things, I can, like, I can do that and I already have started doing it.
We've already got a list.
I self, I just do these things, but I have already started doing it. And there's areas I've identified like, oh, I think this needs to go back to the teachers. Because there was some either misunderstanding or what they chose doesn't align with, with actually what they should be doing. So I've already started doing that work. I think there's this other thing of like creating these skills, creating these performance tasks. That I could do, but you will get zero buy in from the teachers and the teachers need to do these things. And so there's, there's sort of like two trains going at once here.
Yeah.
The oversight, I've already kind of started to apply some of that stuff because I just was interested in it.
Yeah.
The, the creation of things that teachers are going to be doing in the classroom has to happen by teachers by and large. It can't happen by me. I can, we can look it over.
We could draft it and we want.
Yeah, we could draft it or we want. If it's not going to fit with the teachers, we also need to have some oversight there. So there's kind of like two layers of oversight.
Right, but that's what we're seeing with proposal three. We're, we're, we're pushing both those buses back to you. We expect tomorrow that both of them have started up and are moving forward. When you come to see us November seventh. You're just coming with a little more clarifying, clarification on the project. You've been working on it now for a month.
Basically, what have you done and what are you planning to do?
Yeah. Amanda?
I still feel like these conversations should be within a committee and then brought to these meetings. Rather than spending these meetings, having these deep conversations, that it's going to be continuous work. I still feel like a committee should be doing this work and bringing a smaller conversation to these meetings.
Okay. Well, I think the essence of curriculum work lies with the superintendent. So, or I'm sorry, the assistant superintendent, well, the superintendent. Um, and so that's going to be incorporated then within her, um, reports to the board here. This is really just because we're defining a new project. I think that the, that the conversation.
Financing.
And financing it is a little lengthy and, and depth. I don't, um, I mean, next month, yeah, they're going to bring. Whatever that clarifying document is, it may have a conversation, it may not have a conversation depending on what's on the paper. But I don't think we're going to be having curriculum conversations here at this board level.
And in actuality, they do have a committee. It's starting with the two of them. And they're going to pursue to have other people involved in their committee. So it, to me, it's already started. They already have it. They're on.
Any other discussion to the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of supporting proposal three?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstaining? Two abstentions? One abstention?
Yeah, I'll see, probably should.
Okay. Two abstain. All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to V S B A resolution. So everyone had that in their packet. Um, do we need to go over them? Do people have questions about them? Are we confident and? Um, like just going through. um, like just going through them and Eric, um, telling Eric how you want him to vote. He's our voting delegate. Voting the way the V S B A voted. What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I went through all of them. I, I think that, um, Eric, how do you feel that, um, the motion, the that are, um, that you're happy with them? Did you want more or did you disagree with some of the resolutions and would have rather? Are you pretty good with what they just, everyone decided?
Uh, that's, that's a very good question, uh, because, uh, um, with these particular resolutions, you know, when I read through them initially, you know, I was thinking to myself, well, that sounds good. But then, you know, um, you know, listening to like the V S B A's resolution webinar, there's a little bit more to it. And, and one thing that, you know, um, I wanted to bring up, um, is that, you know, last year when, you know, I, I voted for as a delegate, um, there was, there was some discussion on some of these resolutions. And you're gonna have those who are in favor and, and obviously those who aren't. And it brought really good discussion. You know, uh, however, I voted, you know, strictly how the G R C S U board, when we discussed it last year, wanted. And I guess what I would want to know is when we have this much bigger discussion at the conference, um, is the board okay? And I guess maybe we could take it resolution by resolution. Are they okay with, um, uh, either be sticking with what the board wants for a decision or, uh, having flexibility on making a decision based off of, um, you know, what the conversation brings. Because, you know, I, I've got more questions on some of these resolutions than good answers, really.
So I, I, I'll, I can say that I, I'm happy to give you flexibility, Eric. I believe that you're going to vote and have comments and, um, conversation that would best benefit the G, G R C S U.
Yes. And I agree with that wholeheartedly. I think you've, you've done, just by being a part of this, you've taken the time to read through them. I mean, we've all read through them, but you're right. Um, there are times when you're there that these, these things get discussed and, um, I think we have to leave it in your hands. That's my opinion. I think that uh, there's a trust between us and you, and I think you'll do what you think is best, as Lisa said, for G R C S U.
Okay. I, I appreciate it.
Is, is by consensus of the board, is everyone okay with Eric?
I agree with that.
Okay. All right. There you go, Eric. You have to show, shoulder the burden of the V S B A resolution. All right. Um, moving on to policies. A one, role and adoption of school board policies. These are second read policies. E twelve, flag display. F eleven, English learners. F twenty-five, section five oh four and ADA grievance protocol for students and staff. F twenty-seven, communicable disease mitigation measures for students and staff. G twelve, proficiency-based graduation requirements. G fourteen, class size policy. A motion would be in order to approve the second reads.
So moved.
By Mike. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. First reads, D four, visitors, volunteers and work-study students. F thirteen, harassment, heasing and bullying prevention of students. F twenty-three, G R C S U equity policy. G nine, responsible computer network internet use. A motion would be in order to accept the first reads and move on. Motion by Tina. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We're now at our second public comment. We still have no public here with us and I don't see that any public has joined us. So we will move on to, uh, the next meeting date is November seventh, obviously here. And we do require an executive session. So it is seven fifty-seven. So a motion to move into executive session for contract personnel negotiations would be in order at seven, we'll say eight o'clock. Motion by Mike. All those in favor of discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. So that'll give everyone online an opportunity to leave this link and you should have a new link. All right?